And furthermore, instructed to the State Department to disclose any matter coming before this four county commissioners with respect to which there is conflict, damage, or appearance of such conflict. Mr. President, give our end of session.
Let us pray. Good day, Heavenly Father. Just thank you for this great day that you've given us. Father, we ask that you just continue just to be with us and just guide us and, Father, and just make the right decisions for our county. And, Father, we ask that you just take and just continue just to bless our county and just be with us. And, Father, you know what you really want. There's things that we have to do. And, Father, we ask you just be able to, the ones who are sick and ill, just continue just to touch and heal their bodies. And, Father, we ask that you just continue just to watch over us and protect us and bless us. And thank you for everything that you do for us. And, Father, in all these things, we ask of you in your precious and holy name, Jesus Christ with prayer. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands here, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I challenge to the chairman?
Yes, sir.
Can I motion to approve the amendments from our workshop? Amendment number 718, 926, 815, 909, 25, and the change in payment on 926, and especially on 929.
Second, favor.
Aye.
It's really, and McKenna was unable to make it a cent of her. It is that time of the year that they're trying to raise money for the yuletide. This number of children required is the dollar amount of $52,750 this year. So you can read your letter. And Ruby and McKenna take it over.
Is that the letter in there?
Yeah, it should be on your desk up there. We normally gave, I think, five thousand. Everybody said five thousand.
Is there a play?
That we got. Five thousand.
I'm going to motion for, your second.
Thank you.
One minute for Melissa.
Recently, the AAA has provided the ARPA grant in the amount of $12,405 to be spent for September 30th, 2024. This grant would be to install wheelchair ramps for the elderly in Grand County. There is no county match. I'm here to ask permission on the board to apply for this grant.
Any questions? What was the percentage between that, it's 10%?
No, there's not much.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, your second. Second, on favor.
Second, aye.
And also, I'm here for the Title VI. We are actually still under review for our apply review. So Juanita or Tracy Juan is going to give you the information on that. They have already gave them theirs back, so they kind of know more about that than I do.
Okay. Melissa, no problem. Mr. President, you're up.
I'm here representing the task force that has formed for Grand County Health and Fitness Center. And we had a very good meeting this month, and we met with Kara Keen from the Camden Foundation. We have been talking with WNC Bridge Foundation. We've got like four foundations that we've met with that wants to help us. And I have a meeting next week with Dogwood. The task force wanted me to come today and ask the commissioners if they would consider applying for a grant through USDA, not a grant, I'm sorry, a loan through USDA, for the purchase of property we have found of nine acres that could be used for the health and fitness center for the total of $280,000. They told us that we could get a loan through USDA at like 3% or 3.5 max, is what they call Brian Heskey. And we wondered if the commissioners would consider looking into that and how much it would cost to purchase the land, because we've got a lot of foundations that want to help us with the building of the project. But the biggest hurdle we're going to have is just acquiring the land.
Well, maybe you have a price or a first section price.
$290,000 is what the land purchase would cost.
Is the contract being drawn?
Drawn, yes. Contingent that we can come up with the funds for the purchase of the land. And the land is straight across from the library. Lee Anne Ayers inherited son of the land, three acres. And behind it is 6.5 acres that David and Brenda RT owns. And it is also in the plans of Michelle Shiplett with the Greenway Project that would connect the Greenway walking trails, would connect with the fitness center, and would go all the way out to Stanley. So it's a great opportunity for us. We talked both parties way down from their asking price. And for nine acres, we've been told by Paige Jones here in the county that that's a very good price, because the infrastructure is too it as far as city water and sewer. But we just wanted to present that and ask y'all if y'all would talk about it and consider it for the task force.
We definitely have the conversation, but we've been talking about money, y'all.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Don.
We'll skip over here. Black components.
Would you speak a little guidance?
We received the second tranche, they call it, of the last funds that have been deposited. And according to the meeting minutes from December of 2022, we had appropriated the first portion of the money that we received. We never have made a plan per se for the second portion of it. In the minutes, it says that the need was to have a capital improvement plan. So before we can move forward, we actually have to build a plan with what we're going to do with that money.
How much is the second? Which floor?
The same as I said before. Who was carrying the plan for the party?
I believe it was just determined in a board meeting that 160 of each were to go
to each of the fire departments. That was the plan.
Okay.
And that was devised in a board meeting.
So we already made a plan to put together a plan?
That was what was stated, that we would need to put a capital improvement plan together before exchanging those funds.
Okay. You have any other information?
You should have a copy of the report in front of you on page one. If you look at the column, it is highlighted in green, that is our unrestricted cash balance to date. That's between the two general funds that we have at United Community Bank in North Carolina Capital Management Trust. That amount is $5,370,652.18. If you look down towards the bottom of the page, the capital projects account has the $3.3 million in it. We discussed that earlier in the Davenport meeting today. We have the school capital projects account at North Carolina Capital Management Trust. That's the $120,000. The American Rescue Plan Act has $850,000 in it to date. We do need to make the transfer for the expenses for the urgent care. So I'll be going through those expenses at the end of this week and figuring out what that transfer will be. And those will come from the American Rescue Plan Act account into the general operating account to replace the costs that we've put out to date. The SCID grant courthouse account that we have at North Carolina Capital Management Trust, it's at $4.9 million. That is down from the original $5 million, but that's due to the design costs that we've invested up against the engineering firms. It is acquiring a dividend interest as well. Just the earnings that we've acquired in interest on the North Carolina Capital Management Trust to date, well, to this month, was $43,366. Year to date, we've already accumulated $90,000. If you go on to page three, we've not filled in any information yet on page two. If you want to page three, you'll see that top highlight area, that's for September. So this is our total tax collections, which comes from our rail ops reports from our tax collector's office. Current year taxes that we've collected are $368,413.75. Prior year taxes that were collected this month was $12,177.36 for a total collected of $380,591.11. What was collected for the DMV, including the BTS, was $56,703.74. If you go down to the next highlighted rows, we've got current year and prior years, just so that you can see the evaluation of this year versus last year. Our collections percentage is, our current collections percentage is 18.3. And if you look back at previous years to date, we were at 17.43. So our collection rate is continuing to increase. So our total levy for the collections for this month was $1.6 million. And that is just to date, so that's for July, August, and September. At the end of fiscal year '23, we're at $7 million collected. If you move on to page four, and look down at the highlighted area for September, our revenues were $930,482.39. Our expenditures were $2.2 million, so there was a deficit of $1.3 million. We do still have outstanding grant reimbursements that we're waiting on. We're waiting on some from CDVG. We're waiting on the Volkswagen grant reimbursement for those trucks, which is a considerable amount. We're also waiting on one that we have with the Department of Justice. It was for radios and ping pong radios and that type of thing for the Sheriff's Department. So it seems like that the revenues are rolling in really slow right now for the grants. But we are doing, and we're continuing to stay on top of the report and to make sure that work.
Yeah. Well, the state has adopted a new program, and they're having problems.
Yes, they are.
Because they're slowing up on their reimbursements as well.
Yes. It does seem to be trending a little bit slow right now. But if you look at our revenues for this same time period in '23, and we were at $1.2 million, so it's not a huge variance at this time. On page five, you can look at our revenues today as the $2.3 million. Our expenditures today is the $7.6 million. Like I said, we do have quite a bit outstanding in grant money that we're waiting to receive that will help offset those expenditures. So to date, our deficit is $5.3 million. If you go to page six, you'll see this is for the sales tax collection. So for the month of September, we're actually reporting what occurred in July, but we don't receive it until September. So it was $316,423.22. And that brings our year-to-date total to $587,517.78. The variance between now and the same time last year is $50,000, actually to the good. And year-to-date, the 524 expansion has collected $45,000. The schools portion of that is the $21,000, and it actually has a growth rate of 8.62%. If you look down at the bottom, this talks about the quarter cent sales tax. I've been doing a lot of work on this lately and trying to see that we have been transferring that money over into our capital projects accounts. We've collected to date $1.1 million, and we've actually transferred over $1.7 million to our capital projects fund. I don't believe all of that was for the quarter cent, but I do know that we've at least, at a minimum, we've covered the quarter cent. And we're still doing some research into that account. So the capital projects account is that $3.3 million. And if you take out the excess that we're showing right now for the transfers, it would be $2.6 million. And if you move on to page seven, this is just an analysis of all the past due taxes. So if you look at the second, the second segment on there, that's the information for this current fiscal year. So for the, actually, we're collecting still for the fiscal year ending 6/30/23. We've collected $7.5 for that year ending. And then each year, it's got the totals of what has been collected. So overall, total taxes, it shows you the collections versus what is due. So total taxes due is still at $8,900, but they are continuing to collect. And like I said, our collection rates have continued to increase. So they are actively pursuing the outstanding taxes. Do you want to have any questions about that report? I do have a couple of budget amendments that have been requested. These are all within the current budget. It's basically just moving money from one line out into another. Amendment one was signed the other day. This is actually amendment two. And amendment two is just requesting, the Health Department was requesting to move some money from adult health into family planning. So I'll pass that around for your signatures. And then we also had, that's four, I apologize, I'm finding that order here. Amendment number three is the Health, not the Health Department, the Department of Social Services actually received some money. It was some revenue that they received, and then they in turn had to go out and expend that money. So it's basically, we are adding to the budget, but then the expenditure washes that amount. But it was state funded. So that would be on amendment three. And then on amendment four, this again was just the SS asking to move some money from one account to another internally. So I'll pass those amendments around for your signatures. I believe that was all I have for you for the financial report.
Have we already, have we already addressed the amendments?
No. We do need to make a motion.
Can you make any amendments?
Yes, I can make those amendments to you. I'm sorry. Okay, so amendment two, the amount was for $6,565, and that was for the SS. They received extra revenue, and they in turn went out in expenses.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? Second, on favor.
Aye.
And then amendment number three, sorry, I've got copies here, and I have them out of order. Amendment number three was for the Department of Health, and that was moving $4,000 from adult health into family planning.
Does that motion for that?
So.
On favor?
Aye.
And then the last amendment, which was number four, is for the SS, and they're raising the amount of $5,000 from guardianship into travel.
Motion to approve that.
So.
Second. Okay, on favor?
Aye.
Is there anything else to find?
About there.
Any questions? Hold up.
Do we need to approve the financial report? I've been, I'm, I'm around, maybe.
Well, they always get you if you're.
I apologize for being late, because the board will let you in. We're trying to hurry. I believe that Kim Prentice copies the Top Six plan. We just have to update it, it has to be approved, signed by the chairman of the board in several areas, Grand County Transit, also for the senior center, they're going through a compliance review as well. All it is, is just our policy where we do not discriminate against anyone due to age, religion, sex, nationality, origin, you name it. And we don't, and never have. But we had to update it, so the state, the federal required an update on it, so that's what you have before you.
Hold up. Does that motion approve these updates, broken plans for Top Six for the senior center and transit?
Motion to approve.
Second. Second, on favor?
Aye.
Hold up.
Juanita.
I may be bringing you a little bit of good news tonight, hopefully it is. So I want you to look up the election board's budget, see what's in contingency plan. We went to a meeting to look at the new election equipment in Swain County Thursday night for the election board. I beg your pardon, I wanted to call the chairman of the election board. Sorry, I think everybody knows me, I never introduce myself. But the board went and viewed that, and you have to view it from the state before you can procure that equipment. There's a house bill that's passed the house, and they're going to sign it, they're going to mandate that your voting equipment be updated and changed. Right now, if you go ahead and do the voting equipment, you're going to get around $14,000 trade-in on the old voting equipment. There's only two systems in the state that slip that's using these N100s, Grand County and Swain County. We've got to update it. But the kicker was, they had a really good plan through Prentle Lake, and that's the one we chose when we looked at it, that we would like to go with. And their proposal is this. This year, I think, in contingency, we've got $49,000, $48,910, correct?
That's correct.
That was careful that we put it in there for the budget for this year, and it was for voting equipment, is what we put it for. And it's left, it's in contingency, it's in our budget. However, Prentle Lake gave us a proposal, because they're trying to get everybody in compliance in the state. If we go ahead and we buy this voting equipment now, the total cost is $58,000 for what we need on one part of it, and the other piece is $8,625, and the other piece is $4,768. But what they have proposed is zero interest. We pay the first payment July 1st, 2024, no interest, and the second hike, July 1st, 2025, on the equipment. They'll go ahead, we can order it, they'll have it here, you'll have it to use in the March primary. It's your best bet, and it's a savings way of doing that for the county, because you've got $48,910 in this budget that you can move to something else, or just move it to next year, leave it in the election board. Or leave it in the election board for us if you want to, but if we don't need it, there may be other departments that do. That's the best way of getting that equipment, is they're not going to allow us to trade-in after they mandated it. You've got $14,000 trade-in that came off of that price that I gave you for the total of all that. And the other machine that's with this, that I gave you, the quote of $8,625, is to print about, well, the law right now is this, I'm sorry, you've got 6,800 some registered voters, you have to order 100% ballots. And I don't care if 3,000 people vote, you have to order them all, Prentle Lake prints it, and you pay for it, and we put them in the garbage, or bind them up and keep them for several years later. We can legally dispose of the blank ones that's never been used. With that printer, that $8,625 comp that I told you that's added in with that, we printed ourselves the ballots. Within five years, you'll save your money back. You're probably going to save $6,000 a year just imprinting ballots. So it's a win-win for the county to do that. It's entirely up to you. But to me, it's the best thing we can do. We've got $48,910 in. But that $35,696.50 would be in July 1, 2024, the second hike, July 1, 2025, with zero interest.
So two payments, basically.
Two payments, no interest. We've only got 30 days on that contract when they were showing if they've been going around the state trying to, but we're the last two that's using the N100s in the state.
All of a sudden, you want us to make a decision on that?
We've only got 30 days on that contract, and that contract was printed October the 6th, and you won't meet again, so I ran over here and got on public comment, and ran back to the board over there. It's one of the reasons that I'm late. But you can talk about it, you can tell later on it. I mean, we're not pushing. I just think that's a win-win for the county, because you've got $48,000 in, and already a missed year's budget. That is the cost on it. It's going to be $70,000, in other words, total for all of it. But it's $35,696.50 the first year, and then $35,696.50 the second, zero interest, and we give the trade-in.
How much is traded?
$14,000. You're going to lose that after they mandate it, they will take the trade-in.
$15,000.
It's right at 15. She's right, it's a few bucks more to risk. Ella, another board member.
We're just waiting on the.
Big and big.
We're waiting. We're just waiting on drawing the man back, that's right. We'll lose our trade-in when they do that.
Yes, that's what they're telling us in the state, that you will lose the trade-in, you won't get that money back.
And we got to get them midway.
We have the $14,000 now, if we like to decide.
It's minus off of that price, yes. It was higher than that, and it minus it off. They took it off.
I think that's pretty clear. I don't have any questions. Glad to, thank you, Juanita.
Do you want to put that form of motion?
I will, be glad to. I make the motion that we follow your recommendations to get the refund of $14,000 and make two no-interest payments to pay for the required new equipment.
Second. Second, on favor?
Second, aye.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Discuss numbers. We've got releases of $1,574.91 and $206.10.
Motion to approve.
Releases, your second.
Aye.
On favor?
Aye.
Grant, I'd like to see what you have, gee.
Jacob, or Jacob, sorry about that. Josh Carpenter with Southwest and Becca Scott had reached out to me. We do have an additional CDVG for $900,000. I didn't find out about it till on the line, so we're trying to get it put in. They had called and asked for some updates, and I just used the last one. I suggest that if we were to get this grant, that we advertise that we're going to take new applications, because most of the applications we have are from $2,000. I guess it was the 12th when we started the last CDVG, and so we can do that, that we just had to have a submit formation going forward. But I did submit to get that grant for extra dollars.
We'll get that back.
They had to submit it, I think, by the end of this week, so we should know within a couple of weeks.
Underwater ROB?
Yeah, we need the EM Homeland Security Grant for underwater ROB with sonar, so he just received that with no county match to the county. He just wanted to let y'all know, send him $1,000.
I appreciate that.
Brian Stevens with EM.
Well, capital projects for the Skylab, you can talk about that.
You do have that on your desk. I made some inquiries. They said they had some immediate needs, so you can see the answers that we received. I think they should have some monies available that we didn't learn about until, but if you have any questions, or you want me to ask any questions, just let me know, and I'll send some questions on back to Ms. Knight.
Do we know if there are going to be additional requests over and above what the school has in their funding, in their funds? How do you know that, Mr. President?
They did send us, Ms. Knight sent us a copy of some immediate needs.
So they said, under their immediate needs, they have an intercom system at each campus, which would range about three hundred thousand, and HVAC system at the Helpful Living Center, which would equal about two hundred and ten thousand, and to replace the remote security systems on the doors of all campuses, would be two hundred and ten thousand, and then to replace the interior door locks would be between one thousand, and that was immediate needs, so that's another five, six, almost eight hundred thousand in immediate needs.
Okay, do we have like a seventy million dollar grant program at the state level, and I believe that is up to the superintendent to apply for those funds, and I'm not sure about the HVAC, but the other immediate need funding looks to me like it, it fits right under the seventy-one million dollar grant program.
The school safety grant money, I think, would most likely cover the intercoms and most likely the security systems.
It will cover the security system, I think the only thing I see that I have a question about is, is the HVAC, did we have an immediate need for HVAC last year, and the, or is that...
This one is for the Helpful Living Center, so this one is, I guess, newer, a newer request, and Gillespie's representative had mentioned that that might be a possibility, but they use ESTER funds for the HVAC system.
Right, okay. So that would, are they going to apply for that at the school?
They have ESTER funds, I believe that they would have to...
Already in there?
They have ESTER funds, it's probably available to them, they would have to probably request and draw it down, is my assumption.
Okay.
What's the number of agents, say what they got, say if they, if they're even a wire release, pass the money, and shout this information, let's get them to go down the route, track if they've got money, and they gotta restrict it out, they everywhere.
We'll just tackle that at the fall meeting, and you'll bring us up to say on that, thank you, Stacy.
Have Jason Inspector, jail, submit quotes.
Uh, they were doing that, the jail was actually doing that, there was two, two vendors that I know of that was going to bring in quotes, they will have some sandblasting to do with this painting. I think this is, that was gone, I think this was the new Cody, yeah, because I believe we did that when Mr. Cody was still there, we removed that paint from years ago, so this was the newer paint, yeah.
We spent quite a bit of money on that.
Because if it's not, if it's contaminated, it'll, you can't actually...
If that's, if that's a question, we haven't really worked that in the meeting.
Okay. We were, I was told that it was done by people who didn't really know, and they had scraped off a lot of the paint, so it has made rough places, and the jail inspector just did not like that, so all that has to be sandblasted off, but, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm almost one hundred percent positive that is new paint.
Yeah. We got a pump for a hundred sixteen thousand five hundred twenty-eight dollars for the line that I lost to urgent care. Much to approve of that pump?
So moved.
Second, on paper?
Aye.
And Chevy?
Yeah, our Chevy will auction this out here, it's a 2012, and I'm gonna be auctioning off the one with DSS, and we received a new Pathfinder from Juanita, so if you would like, we could surplus the 2012 Equinox here, it sounds pretty rough, it's, might gonna have to have some work done, if y'all are okay with that, I'd like to surplus that.
I'm fine with it.
Second?
I'll make a motion first.
Thank you.
Second?
Second.
On paper?
Aye.
And sell the jail, sell jail to the...
Approve the sale jail, yeah, to sell to the jail.
I was trying to figure out how to say that.
Yeah.
Sell jail, send the same.
Can you tell I was, I was in a hurry, you're saying, the senior center has a van that holds fifteen people, and the jail are wanting to purchase it, so I went on Carfax, or whatever that's called, and it's like twenty-one thousand is what it's worth, if I traded it in, I could get like thirty-five thousand, but, you know, in order, we usually make one department buy it from the other department, because they'll, in turn, go get a smaller vehicle to use to take the seniors out, you know, for their senior celebrations, and stuff like that, but it's mainly sitting there, it's hard for the seniors to get in and out of the van the way it's, the step-up is, so we were more concerned, I think, and Melissa could speak to it, of their safety more than anything, so if you're okay with selling it to the jail...
Motion to sell the jail to the seniors.
But before you answer, before you answer that, if, if we do sell it, the senior center just wants to make sure that we will be allowed to purchase another van.
You'll have forty-one thousand dollars.
We can use our general purpose, though, to make out the run.
Doing our motion to approve that transfer.
I'll make that motion.
For a second. On paper? And we wanna talk about possibility of our Southwestern Child Development Center.
Was there an email today?
I don't know, I don't think any emails, only, but we had a meeting yesterday with Sheila Holm, the Southwestern Child Development, and we were informed by her and the trainer of Southwestern Child Development, that they have cash funds to pay the employees of the child development centers for two weeks, and she informed the board members that they would be closing all the Southwestern Child Development Centers the thirty-first of October. I have been in touch with two members of the Eastern Van Council, another good contact with Chief Hicks, I know they also, Sheila Holm said it yesterday's meeting, that fifty-one children had moved into pre-k from their child development centers, and they had quite a few openings, we have had one center that transferred totally all the workers and the children to a privately owned center, this was a, this was a major shock, we've been hearing that we have financial problems, but to hear that the closing would be October the thirty-first, I don't, I reject that, I do not accept that. And since so, I've spoken also to Sue Lynn Leonard at Foursquare today, Jacob was in a meeting, Natasha, I think you remember the meeting we had here, that Sue Lynn attended with Southwestern Child Development, and Sue Lynn was very open about saying that they had extra money, and Head Start would be willing, enthusiastic, and open to working with the child development group on keeping the centers open. A number of the children we serve here in Grand County are foster children, so if we don't get them placed over there with the state, and, anyway, I noticed Sue Lynn was gonna give a call to child development today, also spoke with Russ Harris, and left messages for Kevin Corman and Carl Gillespie, also spoke with, or Cody, who has a good working relationship with the governor's office, to see if we can find some solution to, to keep these centers open.
Tony, did you say all of them?
That's exactly what I said, Jay, I couldn't believe it either.
How many is there?
Um...
About seven or eight, huh?
Yeah, seven or eight. Um, and, and it was, like, I, I'm, I'm, I'm not okay with, I don't, I have a good feeling about the meeting I was in yesterday at all, so, like I said, I've, I've called everybody I know to call today, the gentleman I, I called about, just getting with the new chief at the Eastern Van, called me back by my number, and said the chief would be giving me a call on that, and see if they had some way to help out, I know Foursquare, it is available to help, and Sue Lynn Leonard just simply said, and she was in shock, stunned by that news, because she was in a meeting on Friday with these same folks, and some people from Raleigh, some lady named Janice Edgerton, whom I do not know, but Ms. Leonard, director at Foursquare, stated that there was not a hint of this mentioned on Friday, and this was yesterday.
We know about it, we're working on it.
So, how did, when we had the meeting before with, with the Southwestern Commission, they had mentioned just a small handful of centers being non-profitable, but on the other hand, returning enough profit to stay operational, how do they go for all of them?
I don't know, I don't know, Natasha, I do know, I asked what the budget for the entire child development group is, and I was told two hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars, and another board member asked what is the budget for the childcare centers. As far as I'm concerned, we are in the business of childcare, and, and not the other, I mean, all the work that we do is important work, but top priority for me, I wouldn't be sitting on that board that was not childcare, and the budget for the childcare centers was one hundred and sixty-three thousand, for the other entities, whatever they are, it was a hundred and ten thousand, there's, I, I find that to be a bit of, out of sync myself, and I don't know enough about it to talk about it, except that I, I cannot in good conscience accept that recommendation.
Is there any real business?
And I believe you might remember too, Jacob and Natasha, that Ms. Leonard offered help, and was very open, forthcoming, and willing to do that, when I spoke to her this morning, she had not been contacted in any way to do any kind of work like that.
Yeah, she complained many times that she would be available to help.
She certainly did.
We know about the problem.
So Jay, do you have anything further on that?
Well, I, I know Natasha Wilson was working there when I hired her, and, and she gave a very negative opinion of its future, but kept on the way it was keeping along, so, that's why it takes my interest, because she talked a lot about how things are kinda going downhill.
Absolutely, well, it's been about a year ago, that in our meetings, we were, I was hearing, we've never had this much money to spend, we've never been in such a good cash flow situation as we are right now, and that was the art of funding, I'm sure, but we all knew that that was not gonna be forever recurring funding, so I'm not sure what all the particulars are, I just know that we need to take care of our children. We also indicated to the director of Southwestern Commission that we were open as a board for them to come to us, and let us know their needs here for this center, if I recall correctly, is that right, Jake?
Correct.
I think so. I have not made contact with any of you.
I don't know.
Have you, Natasha?
It's just...
No, I have not.
It's, it's strange that...
Two days.
This type of organization's been around for this long, and then all of a sudden, financial burn.
Just crash and burn, my sister worked for that organization for thirty-seven years, and she's been retired twenty, close.
We will do what we can.
Yeah, well, I, I think we have to get more information.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna...
And I have been promised that, I didn't get anything today.
Any business, Robert?
You have the capital projects report on your, on your desk, I have one thing that has been asked of us, Ryan Sharabie had reached out to us, asking if he can, if we can post on our social media that the Bosom West has recently launched a new tower on Westport Hill, allowing them to expand their wireless coverage in Grand County, they offer service speed up to twenty-five megabytes for residential customers who qualify, and if you are interested in the service, please contact the Bosom West cuts for service team, and if you're okay with that, there would be a lot for this to be posted by us on social media.
I would tend to, I think it's all right.
Ain't that, ain't that a problem, that?
Not that I'm aware of.
Did he say how much it was gonna be?
He did not, typically, I know they're...
It's gonna be compatible to the other services.
And I wouldn't mind sharing the other services if they ask us as well, that's not something that, I'm not putting it on the website, I'm putting it, like, on social media that we use.
Okay. Anything else?
And I did receive an anonymous letter in my office that was sitting on my desk, and it says, "Kim, do you mind giving this back to Lynn? It was taken from him before we took the job away from him. He was doing his job, and some did not like what he was having to carry out. He has treated us with respect and continues to do so, I can't hold on to what is his. We may have told him many times we were sorry this happened, he just looks and says, 'That is in the past, we need to move on.' Please convey to him that we are so sorry, and we should have never let it happen." So I wanted to publicly read that letter, and I have your stuff right there.
And you had heard that before, I believe, when?
On there? Is there anybody else?
I think, I think it's important to add, we are having several people come and contact us about posting on our social media page, and as a citizen, and a worker, and somebody that went to college for PR, I think it's important, Grand County, to consider getting a PR page, social media is free, and I think we're about to turn into a couple of projects that are gonna cause an uproar with our citizens, so I think it's important that we take on the block one to educate our citizens.
They probably need to form some policy around that, too.
It would've been super helpful around the revaluation time, and Brooklyn County did an excellent job, like a question and answer type thing, where they, I guess they informed the citizens what revaluation, what revaluation was, like what the state mandates were, and how that transferred down to them as accounting level, and then had a lot of good, like, Q and A from them, and it just gave them a lot of information that, I think that if we had put that out there to our people, it might've helped in some way, so looking to our next revaluation, that might be something that we really need to try to put together, as like an education piece, or even a public meeting, where we could have, we could have an education.
Yeah, let's look at that, it's not written completely, either, it's like one of the places.
Yes, exactly, and I mean, I more than wanted to help with that, because, I mean, not everybody is watching this or...
We have a volunteer, we have a volunteer.
I think that's important. Yeah, I think that's important.
All right, we got a volunteer, that's all we need, two things, all right. Thank you much for going into closed session of GS 143318, 1181356, privileged or confidential information, county client privilege, personnel contracts with ten minute break.
So moved.
Thank you.
On paper?
Aye.